Okay, welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. Yeah, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance this evening and follow up with the invocation by Father Tom Jones from the Church of the Holy Spirit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather to conduct the business of our city, we do so seeking your guidance and your blessing. Give our city council members discerning hearts as they listen to those who offer witnesses about the issues at hand. And enable those who approach the council to state clearly their thoughts and concerns so that our council may fully understand and properly assess the community impact of the decisions they make. Guide our council to make wise decisions in the work they do this day, that the choices they made are made with right intention and with a mind towards the proper stewardship of the public resources with which they have been entrusted. Enable all present to see that what we hold in common as citizens of our fine city is more important than our differences so that working together, we might make a difference in the lives of those we encounter along our journey and those who depend upon us to act faithfully and responsibly. Finally, Lord, bless all those who gather in this place that they may know your love and grace and knowing it, embrace it, share it, and let it be what guides us as a community towards right relationship with you and one another. Amen.
Thank you, Father Jones. Before I call the meeting to order, I'm gonna do a quick shout out to my wife who's sitting at home, my lovely bride of 25 years today. So this is our anniversary and this is how we're celebrating it, so.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you. All right, I called the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Stenson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make a motion now. I would like to make an amendment. I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Then I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item 15A to right after 10A on the agenda. So move 15A right to right after 10A on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the agenda by Cook, seconded by Welch to move item 15A to right after 10A on the agenda. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentation, seven A, presentation on the 2021 annual report with Gro Sarpie.
Yes, good afternoon. Josh Sarvot here with Gro Sarpie. Kind of a little, little late for you guys, but a kind of a quick run through of our last year work and then kind of a quick insight, maybe some of the things we're already seeing this year since we just finished up first quarter. So I'll start, if you guys have the kind of economic indicator sheet, just briefly, make a couple of notes on this, so. As you'll see, the last kind of half of the year in 2021, we were below 2% unemployment, so. That's kind of a great thing and a bad thing. So I think there was an article actually in New York Times kind of highlighting Nebraska because we have the lowest unemployment rate, the highest labor force participation rate. So if anyone out there right now is looking for a, for a job, chances are they have one. So I know looking up at this next year, usually towards at the beginning of the year, it kind of bumps up a little bit. In January, we had unemployment of 2.2, so still kind of really low, one of the lowest in the nation. And just kind of some, hopefully some relief coming. I know Dr. Thompson with UNL, he's given some presentations and kind of said he expects some of those people who left the workforce, whether it be for maybe, you know, an early retirement, maybe they're looking for kind of a part-time job coming back in, or people who left for childcare reasons are taking care of someone who needed some, you know, care at home. Hopefully those people will start to come back, so. Hopefully we'll see some relief in the, in the name of a few thousand people coming back into the workforce, but that's only going to put a small dent into the kind of the massive need for employees that we need right now. And just a real quick note on residential growth, we saw the strongest residential growth last year than we've really seen since the kind of the housing boom of the 2000s. So I know you probably, I know we get a lot of questions. I'm sure you guys get a lot of questions of, you know, why are all these apartments going up? It's because we have a huge, huge shortage of housing needs. So you look at how many houses we build each decade, last decade, it was, it was, took a big dip, so. Excited to see more housing and definitely any housing of any type is, is a huge need for, for our area. Another thing we added this year was a BRE report, so sorry I'm sending you guys all over the place, but just a quick summary of the conversations we've had with businesses. So a few keynotes from that, every business we talked to last year expects to maintain or grow their employment. We didn't talk to any businesses and I can't think of the last time I talked to businesses that expected their, their workforce numbers to decrease, so. Everyone continues to be looking for, for employment and there's a ton of demand out there for businesses, which is good to see from the demand side. So last year, there's three companies that could hire over 200 employees immediately. Talking to companies this year, you can add two more. I'm sure those, those three last year are still there, so. You know, between about five companies in Sarpy County, there's probably, you know, close to 2,000 workers that, that folks need. We talk a lot with construction companies and manufacturers, so skilled labor is a big, big thing that we hear from them, so. Always want to plug that and also CDL drivers. Sometimes those careers get overlooked, but we see a huge need and they're paying great wages. One other thing, one of the biggest advantages we always hear from companies is access to interstate, access to the transportation corridors, the highway corridor. So we always want to hear a company say, hey, I chose, you know, this community in Sarpy County because, you know, I love it. More often, it's because, hey, there's a great industrial spot here and it's close to the interstate or close to Highway 75 in those transportation corridors, so. And one thing we did hear a lot from businesses is, you know, from other pain points is their inability to grow or expand onsite, so. As these companies move to, you know, five to 10 acre sites, they, they grow their success and then they're looking for that next step up and there's just not a lot of inventory out there for them. So I'll jump now real quick to the ROI, I think, for scoring. I think that's kind of where we started at. It might be at the top of the page. Perfect. So a few, few keynotes on here, so. We submitted information for 11 projects last year for Bellevue. So that was the most set of any community, so the next closest was 10. Submitted 17 sites, the most, that was the most as well. The next closest was 13 and then we had two prospect visits. And that was the most for any community. Most other communities just had one. So the two visits that came to Bellevue, early on the year, we had a pet food manufacturer, so. Everyone went and adopted pets in 2020 and then beginning of the year, they said, hey, we want to buy them some fancy cat and dog food. So we just saw a ton of projects coming in looking for space. And then also towards the end of the year, we had a spec warehouse developer from out of state looking, so we're starting to get a lot of interest from the spec warehouse developers. So projects that we submitted Bellevue for were primarily food production, kind of warehousing, cold storage and the large manufacturing projects that need rail is also one that we're only able to submit Bellevue for. So you're probably thinking, hey, that's great, but we didn't land any of those projects, so. So some of those reasons, a lot of the times those bigger manufacturing projects were competing nationally. So it's difficult with our workforce numbers to kind of stay at the top of those lists. The timeline for infrastructure, kind of anywhere right now in Sarpy County, we're kind of building out our infrastructure to catch up with demand, so. Sometimes that's something that we kind of get knocked down for. There's, we had a few companies reach out to us about flood risk. They saw, they searched Bellevue, Nebraska, saw there was a flood, so. With those companies, work with the NRD and work with the Corps to kind of say, hey, here's the improvements that have been made. What happened before is not going to happen again to try and give them some assurance there. Also mentioned workforce availability in, in rail, so we submit those for rail service sites, but the the rail spur is not there ready to go today, so. Had some timing there as well. In your community, kind of jumping to the last, just a couple of notes. You'll notice we only had one BRE in Bellevue, so last year was kind of an odd year. A lot of people decided to ignore me, just everywhere, not just in Bellevue, but, so we've already had three this year in Bellevue and have another one scheduled, so we'll see that number jump back up here this year. Just in reference to the skilled trades comment, last year, we created 950 kits for eighth and ninth graders. We provided 250 of those to Bellevue East and West ninth graders. So working with the companies trying to increase their awareness as they're trying to figure out what they want to do. And maybe just kind of looking towards this next year. And I think some opportunities we'll see, we're starting to see a lot of really large manufacturing projects. I know with kind of the EV and the battery, those sectors kind of coming up, we're starting to see more and more really large projects for those type of industries, so. You know, and Bellevue is definitely, I think, a great place for that, south of the base there and with the infrastructure kind of plans that are going through with the sewer and the water and if a big company comes there, I'm sure they're, they'll kind of, you can get the rail, rail there as well, so. A lot of opportunities for one of those really big transformational projects. And I know just countywide, we're kind of, we're short on sites again. It seems like that's kind of a running theme for us, but I think you'll see on the sheet about, I think, four of those sites that we submitted last year are, are kind of gone now, are spoken for, so. Definitely, I think we'll see some, some good movement here in this, this year and coming forth and if a company wants to grow in Sarpy County right now, it's kind of, we got a little bit of land in Gretna and we got a lot of land here south of the basin Bellevue, but that's kind of what we got right now. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions for Josh? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh, so you said that there was a couple of companies that came here and they didn't land here. Do we have any idea where they landed, when they landed?
I could go back, I know, well, so one was towards the end of the year and I think they're still active and looking for a site, so I don't think they've settled and I guess that was a spec warehouse developer and they're probably, I mean, they're looking for land in all sorts of different places, so not necessarily just one spot. As far as the pet food, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on that. I know it seems like we get a lot of projects that'll come visit and then we always try and say, hey, what'd you like, what'd you not like, or what can we improve on? And most of the time, they just, you know, they said, oh, we're not going to go there. We're, you know, kicked to the back of the bucket. They don't respond to us. So I'm not 100% sure. I know those pet food manufacturers, we had a lot kind of looking in the Midwest region because they're looking for the kind of the byproducts from the animal processing facility, so.
And probably ease of getting it out to everywhere in the United States.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Josh.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Item seven B, proclamation declaring April 22nd, 2022 as Earth Day in Bellevue, Nebraska. And, okay. Please announce your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Carrie Dietz-Pillen and my home address is 1119 Birchcrest Road in Bellevue, 005 zip. So Bellevue City Council has a consistent history of recognizing Sarpy County Earth Day and now also Earth Month as celebrated by Green Bellevue and more recently as a real in-person event in conjunction with Omaha Earth Day. We're grateful to the City Council for recognizing and celebrating the importance of this day. As noted in the proclamation in 2022, Earth Day encourages us to invest in our planet and build a prosperous and equitable future. We can see good things happening in Bellevue and we want to recognize in particular the educational teams and students at Birchcrest Elementary with their kindergarten, classroom hydroponic garden and outdoor gardens that help the food bank as well as the la-mazing hydroponic garden at La May Elementary. We hope to see Bellevue as a city continue to invest in our planet by making choices that enhance our ability to travel to the city by bicycle, to use green and sustainable choices for landscapes and parks and encourage recycling in the building of greener structures. We only have one earth. We must take care of it. Now regarding our Earth Day bicycle ride, I'd like to recognize Bob Foslin.
Bob Foslin, I'm at 1227 St. Andrews Road. This year, Earth Day Omaha, we're adding an activity where everybody can ride your bike to Earth Day. When you get there, mode shift Omaha, we'll have a free valet parking for you, so you can put your bike away and go around and enjoy the activities. We're going to have Metro Transit is going to be there with their, one of their new electric buses. And you'll be able to take your bike over there and set it up on the rack, see how easy it is, so you can incorporate, you know, your biking and busing together. Just think about that as your alternate transportation. Heartland B Cycle will be there also, so anybody that, you know, if you rode your bike there, you won't need them, but you can get an understanding of what they do and you can pass that on to some other folks, so. You can come out there and just, you don't have to ride all the way. I mean, you might want to, somebody may be too far out and you can come down and park at a friend's house and ride in the rest of the way, or or one of, you know, something like Twin Creek or something and ride in from there. So, and I've also got some extra posters for the introduce our Ride Your Bike to Omaha Earth Day. So if anyone has any place you want to post one, let me know and I'll give you a flyer. We're not passing off flyers. We just want to put the poster up and people can take a picture of it.
If you hand that to Phil, if you hand that to Phil behind you, he'll, he'll make sure we get that posted.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Okay, I've got a proclamation here and I'm gonna, it's, looks like it's a nine type here, so I'm gonna stay up here where the lights are real good. And read it and then I'll meet Carrie and Bob wants in, or Bob, right? Yep, Bob wants in the photo, then I'll, I'll come up to the podium and meet you there. Okay, so Earth Day proclamation, 2022, whereas April 22nd has marked Earth Day each year for over 50 years. At the first event, an estimated 22 million Americans took to the streets, parks and auditoriums to urge America to come together and clean up its air and water systems. The event inspired a worldwide response that resulted in the passage of landmark environmental laws around the globe and efforts to promote green and sustainable practices in local communities such as Bellevue. And whereas, the 2022 Sarpy County Earth Day theme is to invest in our planet and build a prosperous and equitable future. We know that unless businesses act now, climate change will ever more deeply damage economies, increase scarcity, drain profits and job prospects and impact us all. Yet we also already know that the private sector innovation with public support accelerates the kind of rapid change we need like nothing else. And whereas, we know that we each play a role in collectively acting to conserve, protect and appreciate our natural resources, we recognize our responsibility to protect our community today and in the future. And whereas, the Sarpy County Earth Day will be held over a month-long period with opportunities for individuals to take part in activities, events and exhibitions to learn about caring for our environment. Bellevue residents can take part in the Earth Day activities virtually and use the Nebraska Earth Day passport to earn port, points for the activities that they complete. Sarpy County Earth Day also joins forces with Omaha Earth Day in an event on Saturday, April 23rd from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Elmwood Park in Omaha. The event is free and Bellevue residents can find entertainment for all ages. Following safety guidelines for outdoor gatherings, the celebration will bring back popular activities like the Environmental Expo with over 100 booths, a children's tent with live animals, live music from top local bands, Friend of the Environment Awards, the Health and Wellness Circle, the EV Showcase, demonstration tent, food court, bike valet parking, tree climbing, tree planting, recycled drive-through and a beer garden. New this year, check out the trash, trashin' show. Is that in here right? Okay. Sarpy County Earth Day tent, bike ride to Earth Day Omaha and more. And whereas, on this observance of Earth Day, as your mayor, I ask that you join me in taking steps to invest in our planet and build a prosperous, prosperous and equitable future by making a commitment to educate ourselves and others on pressing environmental issues and working as a community towards a sustainable future. Now therefore, I, Mayor Rusty Heike, have the distinct honor of proclaiming April 22nd, Earth Day in Bellevue, Nebraska. So Carrie and Bob, if you meet me at the podium, we'll grab a picture. And thank you, Green Bellevue, for all you do in Bellevue and for our community, so much appreciated. Item eight, organizational matters, sets on consent. Item nine, approved citizen communication. We have none this evening. Item 10, liquor licenses. 10A recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of application for Papa Chuck's Corporation doing business as Papa Chuck's Bar and Grill for a class I liquor license to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits on sale only at 910 Fort Crook Road South, Bellevue and for Charles Patello as manager. And I will open up that application for public, public hearing. Is the applicant in the audience?
Yes, sir.
Charles Patello at 412 West 29th Avenue, Bellevue.
Thank you. And if you want to say anything about it, you can. In other words, just hang around for any questions.
I'll just hang around.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience, since the public hearing is open, that would like to speak regarding the application? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ma, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of application for Papa Chuck's Corporation, DBA Papa Chuck's Bar and Grill for a class I liquor license to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits on sale only at 910 Fort Crook Road South, Bellevue and for Charles Patello as manager.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions on the application? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And then per the amended agenda, we'll have 15A on your list. Approval of resolution number 2022-10, requesting approval to operate a satellite keynote location at the business operated by Papa Chuck's Corporation doing business as Papa Chuck's Bar and Grill at 910 Fort Crook Road South, Bellevue, Nebraska and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson? Make a motion. We approve 15A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
And I had to restart something here. I'm just gonna take roll call. I'm getting an error. Councilman Stenson?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
McCaw?
Yes.
Preister?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patello, for coming out. Answer any questions if there was any. Good luck. Thanks. Item 10B, recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the approval of application for L. Aeropon Venezuelaan Craft and Kitchen LLC doing business as L. Aeropon for a class I liquor license to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits on sale only at 1021 South 23rd Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska for Richard Mendoza Pinto as manager. And I will open up the public hearing. Is the applicant in the audience? Okay, he is. Same thing, just state your name and address.
My name is Richard Mendoza and I will be located in 1021 West 23rd Avenue here in Bellevue, Nebraska.
Okay, and if you want to say anything, you can. In other words, just wait for questions.
I will wait for questions. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience would like to speak regarding this liquor license application? Please come forward if there is. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor and Control Commission the approval of the application for, and I'm gonna butcher this, for L. How do you say that? A, Arabone?
Arabone.
Venezuelan Craft and Kitchen LLC doing business as Alabron for a class I liquor license to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits on sale only at 1021 West 23rd Avenue, Bellevue, Nebraska. For Richard Mendoza Pinto as manager. And thank you for your help. I appreciate that.
I'll second it.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And thanks again, Mr. Pinto, for coming out. Item 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading. We have none this evening. Item 12, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. We have none. Item 13, ordinances for introduction, first reading. 13A, ordinance number 4084, request to rezone lots 1 and 2. Overlook addition being a replat of tax lot 10B located in the southwest quarter of Section 10 Township 13 North, range 13 East of the 6th PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska from AG to RS 120 for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant Cheryl and James Frankoys, general location 2006 Fairview Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4084, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619 by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 2006 Fairview Road, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing on ordinance number 4084 will be April 19th, 2022 at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Item 13B, ordinance number 4085, request to rezone lot 1 Powers Edition from ML to RE for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant Jeremiah Windsor, general location 304 East La Platte Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4085, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619 by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 304 East La Platte Road, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance and to provide an effective Three oh four East La Platte Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number four zero eight five will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen C ordinance number four zero eight six annexation area number one. Request to annex sanitary improvement districts number sixty seven Normandy Hills and number two forty two Cedar View, all in abutting right. And all abutting rights of way. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero eight six, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate. Lying within the below described boundaries and designating an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing on ordinance number four zero eight six will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two. At six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen D ordinance number four zero eight seven. Annexation area number two. Request to annex tax lot nine A one except right of way. Section twenty three dash thirteen dash thirteen. Tax lot nine B except right of way. Section twenty three dash thirteen dash thirteen. And the irregular northeasterly part of tax lots fourteen A and fourteen B. Section twenty three dash thirteen dash thirteen. All located in section twenty three township thirteen north. Range thirteen east of the sixth P M and all abutting rights of way applicant city of Bellevue, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero eight seven, an ordinance to an- annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots and real estate lying within the below described boundaries and designating an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number four zero eight seven will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen E ordinance number four zero eight eight annexation area number three. Request to annex tax lots five A and sixteen A and the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter. And the north half of the southeast quarter west of road located in section twenty three township thirteen north. Range thirteen east of the sixth P M and part of tax lot three lying west of fifth street. Located in section fourteen township thirteen north range thirteen east of the sixth P M. And all abutting rights of way applicant city of Bellevue, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero eight eight, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots and real estate lying within the below described boundaries and designating an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing on ordinance number four zero eight eight will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen F. Ordinance number four zero eight nine annexation area number four. Request to annex part of tax lot F one A and part of tax lot J except part taken for N R D. Tax lot F one B and part of tax lot H, part of tax lot F one A, part of tax lot J taken for N R D. And part of tax lot K, all located in section eleven township thirteen north range thirteen east of the sixth P M. Part of lots twelve A thirteen B and fourteen B Butterfield subdivision. Part of lot thirteen A north of Drainage Ditch and part of lot fourteen Butterfield subdivision. All except part for N R D. Part of lots lot thirteen and part of lot fourteen Butterfield subdivision, all for N R D. Parcel I D number zero one one six zero five one one seven. Part of tax lot fourteen located in section eleven township thirteen north range thirteen east of the sixth P M. Together with lots thirteen C and twelve B Butterfield subdivision. Part of vacated state right of way in the east half of the east half. Of the southeast quarter and adjacent tax lot fourteen. Section ten township thirteen north range thirteen east of the sixth P M. Part of vacated state right of way in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter west of Fort Crook Road Road South. Section eleven township thirteen north range thirteen east of the sixth P M. And lot one C Palm Tag subdivision and all abutting rights of way applicant city of Bellevue, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero eight nine, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Certain lands, lots and real estate lying within the below described boundaries. To the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing will be. For. Ordinance number four zero eight nine will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two at six P M. Item thirteen G ordinance number four zero nine zero and ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of two parcels of city property. To Carla Alexandra Miller in an amount of twenty thousand dollars per lot and to provide an effective date. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine zero, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of two parcels of city property. To Carla Alexandra Miller and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and there's a request by administration to suspend the rules requiring three readings, hold public hearing tonight. And vote after public hearing is Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we waive. The rule requiring three readings, hold a public hearing tonight. And vote after the public hearing at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. To suspend the rules, any comments or questions, Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I I'd just like to get an update on what we're doing, what the lots are and why we're suspending the rules.
Mr. Risto?
So they, the two lots are in Trigaron and those were two lots that were deeded over to the city after we annexed them. Those two lots have been undeveloped since Trigaron was first built out. If Carla's listening, this probably won't bode well, but they're like the two worst lots you'll ever find in Trigaron. So she's buying those two lots along with an adjoining property. So she wants to develop on those two lots. The reason why the suspension of the rules is because she has a V A loan that's pending as well as a contingent to buy the third lot from a private party. So the thing is kind of complicated, but from the city's perspective, the two lots are. Probably would sit there for a long time without this offer, so we felt pretty good about the offer. And then just moving it forward so she can get her financing done with the V A and the like quickly.
Okay, so we don't have to go out and maintain them or cut grass or do other things, it's good to.
Right, those are our lots to maintain and they're heavily wooded, they're sloped really. The terrain on those lots are pretty difficult to deal with, so be nice that if Carla takes those, so.
Okay, and the suspension is because she's negotiating with another lot or something for the development?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you for that explanation.
Just a little history on those lots, I have a little experience back in that area and they're they're probably. Minimum of thirty and maybe up to sixty thousand dollars worth of additional work. To get a house built on them, so they're they're difficult lots. Any other comments or questions? Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, so it has passed to suspend the rules and hold the public hearing tonight and vote after the public hearing, so. I will open up the public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak regarding the sale of the two parcels? Ordinance number four zero nine zero, if there is, please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding ordinance number four zero nine zero, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Councilman Stinson? Make a motion that we approve thirteen G. Ordinance number four zero nine zero.
Second.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Cook, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, thirteen H ordinance number four zero nine one. An ordinance to amend certain sections of chapter eighteen of the Bellevue Municipal Code and to add new sections pertaining to parking enforcement. Susan, would you read that? Ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine one, an ordinance to amend chapter eighteen. Sections eighteen dash thirty one, eighteen dash thirty four, eighteen dash thirty five. Eighteen dash thirty seven, eighteen dash fifty one, eighteen dash fifty two. Eighteen dash fifty three, eighteen dash sixty five, eighteen dash sixty six. Eighteen dash seventy four, eighteen dash ninety, eighteen dash ninety one. Eighteen dash ninety two, eighteen dash ninety three, eighteen dash one hundred and eighteen dash one thirty six. Of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to parking enforcement. To repeal all previous versions of the same and to add new sections eighteen dash six seven. Through eighteen dash seventy and to provide an effective date.
Now you know what I feel like, thank you. Second reading and public hearing for ordinance number four zero nine one will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen I ordinance number four zero nine two and ordinance amending chapter twenty article one sections twenty dash sixteen. And twenty dash twenty one, twenty point one of the city code relating to certain offenses. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine two, an ordinance to amend chapter twenty article one. Sections twenty dash sixteen and twenty dash twenty point one of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to offenses. To repeal our previous versions of the same and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number four zero nine two will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen J ordinance number four zero nine three, an ordinance requesting to vacate all of Thirty Seventh Street. Between Marie Street and Vase Street, abutting within Vase Hill Haven Edition. And lot two and and three block one. Vase Hill Haven Edition and lots two, three A, three B, four, five and six. Of block two Vase Hill Haven Edition located in section twenty township fourteen north range thirteen east of the sixth P M Sarpy County. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine three, an ordinance declaring the necessity expediency and propriety. Of vacating all of Thirty Seventh Street between Marie Street and Vase Street. Abutting within Vase Hill Haven Edition. In addition to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Lot two and three block one Vase Hill Haven Edition. And lots two, three A, three B, four, five and six block two Vase Hills. Haven Edition located in section twenty township fourteen north range thirteen east. Of the sixth P M Sarpy County, Nebraska now heretofore vacated. Repealing all ordinances and all parts of the ordinances in conflict here with and designating an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number four zero nine three will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two. At six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen K ordinance number four zero nine four, an ordinance to amend the chapter twenty eight article three section twenty eight dash seventy seven. And twenty eight dash seventy seven point one of city code amending certain language pertaining to cost. And other legal fees relating to permitting. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine four, an ordinance to amend chapter twenty eight article three. Sections twenty eight dash seventy seven and twenty eight dash seventy seven point one of the Bellevue Municipal Code. Pertaining to offenses to repeal all previous versions of the same and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number four zero nine four will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two at six P M. Here in the council chambers. Item thirteen L ordinance number four zero nine five. An ordinance to amend section eight dash eighteen of chapter eight of city code pertaining to. Fire section nine oh three. Point three, point one, point two of the two thousand twenty one international building code. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine five, an ordinance to amend section eight dash eighteen of chapter eight. Of the Bellevue City Code pertaining to the twenty twenty one edition of the international building code. To repeal section eight dash eighteen of chapter eight of the Bellevue City Code. As heretofore existing, to provide for the publication of this ordinance and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number four zero nine five will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen M ordinance number four zero nine six, an ordinance to amend section twelve dash thirty six. Nine oh three point three point one point two of the two thousand twenty one international fire code, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine six, an ordinance to amend section twelve dash thirty six point one. Of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the Bellevue Fire Prevention Code. To repeal section twelve dash thirty six point one of chapter twelve of the Bellevue City Code. As heretofore existing to. To provide for the publication of this ordinance and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, and second reading and public hearing for ordinance number four zero nine six will be April nineteenth, two thousand twenty two. At six P M here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of the structures. At thirteen oh two Main Street Bellevue. And I will open for public hearing.
Can I briefly?
Bree?
I was asked by administration to just give a quick recap of why we're here. Back at the last city council meeting. This issue was before the city council, there was an agreement between the council and the owner of the property. That he was going to obtain valid permits with a licensed contractor by tonight's hearing. I I rewatched the minute, the meeting this morning, Mr. Cook. You know, asked, are you confirming that you're able to do that, he said yes. And so he gave that confirmation and then Mike Kirshenson will give a quick update on where we're at today.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Like to just do a little brief overview, show a couple pictures and then. Bring you up to speed of where we're at. So if you recall that originally this. Trying to get this up for you. So originally there was structural damage. From the storm back in July where the tree fell on this house which brought it to our attention. Um. It's not wanting to work right tonight here. Let's move through them like this, this was the aftermath from a tree, this, the the property sat like this all winter with the rain and snow going into the property. This went on up until the. March hearing on the fifteenth. Where we're set for condemnation and.
Mike, if you hit slideshow, will that work? If you right click and hit slideshow? Does that do it or no? Like go up if you. Right there, does that do it? No, okay.
No. I don't have to go through all these pictures, basically what happened was in the second week of March, there were repairs that were tried to be made. Without benefit of a permit just before the council meeting and. On the fifteenth of the council meeting, as Bree stated. He was given an opportunity to obtain permits to get the work going and have the proper inspections for the work. Today at two fifteen, we received an application. Via email for drywall repair, soffit repair. via email for drywall repair, soffit repair, roof repair and gutters. I have no structural details whatsoever of how this is going to be done, what was done. Um, I don't know that any, any of the work meets code. There are so many issues in there. The, the sat up, sat open during the winter months. Mold and mildew was growing on the lumber inside the, the room that was uh repaired. Uh, drywall was installed. Uh, there was electrical Romex that was wet that needed to be removed. Um, there's no electrical contractor listed on this application. There's no electrical work being mentioned. There's a, a deck on the front of the house that I would like to show, if I could get to it, that is basically dilapidated and not even part of the structural damage from the original. Thanks. This is the deck as it presents itself on the front of the house at this time. There's no mention of replacing the deck on this permit all either. So this application basically is not reviewable. There's no structural details. There's work that's missing. There's no electrical contractors. There's a lot of details missing.
No other contact with the owner or contractor other than the email?
Just the, the day after the March fifteenth hearing, I got a phone call and I told him he needed to get a licensed contractor and I was contacted by one roofer during this whole timeframe and that's it until today at two fifteen and then this showed up.
And I don't believe he's in the audience here either.
I don't think so.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Councilman Cook.
Mike, real quick, he would have been notified about this meeting.
He was aware of the meeting.
Okay.
Just for the record, he was here at the last meeting when we continued it to today's date and he agreed to the continuance to today's date.
He called the uh permit tech, text yesterday and mentioned that he knew, knew he had to get permits taken out for this meeting tonight that he was on tonight.
Any other questions for Mike? Yep, Councilman McCaw.
Bree, can you just remind me again what the expectation was from three weeks ago till tonight?
Yeah, so when I reviewed the, the minutes in the meeting, um, made some notes here. He said that he would obtain a licensed contractor and that he would get permits um by April fifth, which is tonight's meeting. Um, that, that was his agreement. He didn't agree that he would have work done. He disagreed that he would obtain the permits with a licensed contractor by today's date. That answers your question.
Yes, now I have another one. Did he obtain the permits?
No, they made application for some drywall repair, soffit repair, roof repair. There's no structural details here. There's no, no structural details for the deck on the front of this house that needs to be replaced. There's no electrical. All these things were mentioned.
Was it a licensed contractor that made the app?
Uh, A and E was a, a general contractor that is licensed, but again, no, no structural details for me to review or even how this is going to be repaired.
Councilwoman Welch.
So Mike, um, based on the last meeting and tonight's meeting, that was enough time for him to do what he shared with us. He told us that he would get done, basically to get in touch with your office, get a contractors in touch with your office, get the permits. I mean, there was enough time to get all of this done, correct?
Believe so, yes.
Okay. Mike, would you be able to issue the permit as is from what you received at two fifteen today?
Not with the work that needs to be done. I, you know, it has to go through a pl- uh, plan review so that we can compare it to code before we issue the permit till we can make any adjustments. There's no, there's no structural detail here whatsoever.
You would need that additional detail in order to actually create a permit.
And Mike, he was aware of that, that we needed all of that detail to make this happen?
Yeah, that's, I mean, anytime you pull up a permit for structural and replacing decks, there's a, a plan that needs to be submitted for joist size. Uh, in this instance, there were rafters that were replaced. I have no idea what size they used, what's, what centers they're on, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone here that would like to talk regarding the show cause hearing? Thirteen oh two Main Street, please come forward. Anybody that wants to talk? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And move to fourteen A one. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero nine condemning the structures located at thirteen oh two Main Street, Bellevue. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion that we approve fourteen A one, resolution number two zero two two dash zero nine.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen B approval of event application of the Bellevue Community Foundation to host the Bellevue Rocks Riverfront Festival on Thursday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, from four P M to one A M on Friday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Friday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-two, from four P M to one A M on Saturday, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. And Saturday, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, from four P M to one A M on Sunday, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-two at American Heroes Park. And I will open up fourteen B for public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak regarding the event application? Anyone that wants to speak regarding fourteen B, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion very happily to approve item fourteen B.
Motion by Welch, second by Stenson. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Fourteen B one, recommend to Nebraska Liquor Control Commission approval of a special designated liquor license for the Bellevue Community Foundation to set up a beer garden at the Bellevue Rocks Riverfront Festival on Thursday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, from four A M to one A M on Friday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Oops.
June nine twenty twenty-two from four P M.
Uh, yep, correction. So you read that first night, uh, starts on June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, from four P M to one A M on Friday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Friday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-two, from four P M to one A M on Saturday, June tenth, two thousand. So the second day is uh June tenth, two thousand twenty-two, from four P M to one A M on Saturday, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. And on Saturday, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-two from four P M to one A M on Sunday, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-two at American Heroes Park. I'll open the public, open that for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the liquor license uh recommendation? For Bellevue Rocks. Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding the liquor recommendation for the Bellevue Rocks event? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve fourteen B one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stenson, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Fourteen C, request to final plat lots one through thirty-eight and outlot A Chandler Creek being a plating of tax lot H two, located in the southwest quarter of section sixteen, Township fourteen North, range thirteen East of the six P M Sarpy County, Nebraska. Applicant TKC Chandler LLC, general location, South Thirty-sixth Street and West Chandler Road. And I will open up uh fourteen C for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience to speak regarding the request to plat? Anyone wanting to speak regarding fourteen C, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve fourteen C as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to ask Ms. Palm, on the diagram, the far east and the far west lots, it's not a straight line along the street along Chandler. It juts in. It's, it's very irregular. In, in the future, as we reconfigure that intersection, I'm just wondering if those ends come back a little bit. We've got plenty of room, but if they start building houses, I'm not sure we can adjust it after the fact. Is there anything that, yeah, it's right at the very top. You can see where it slopes. Uh, any comments on space for sidewalks? Cause likely with thirty-eight more houses, we're gonna have some children. They're gonna be going up to Gilder School and they're gonna have to cross a, right now, treacherous intersection.
Sure. We did look at this when we reviewed the preliminary plat. Um, our public works engineers did take a look at the right of way that abuts this property to the north. Because of the irregular shape of the right of way, we actually have excess right of way. Initially, the developer wanted to kind of um make that a straight line and make it symmetrical and we actually said no. We wanted to keep it just for future um potential improvement, to your point, Councilman Preister, sidewalks, um, all of that will be done eventually. So we wanted to keep the extra right of way. So I'm confident there's enough there. We won't need any additional um, just based on the extra amount that abuts this property.
Okay. Thank you very much and thank you for clarification and for thinking long-term. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Please vote.
All voting yes, mo- motion carries.
Thank you. Fourteen C one, request to approve the Chandler Creek subdivision agreement. And I will open up uh fourteen C one for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Chandler Creek subdivision agreement? Please come forward. Anybody, anybody wanting to speak regarding fourteen C one, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approve item fourteen C one as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to um acknowledge this developer and builder. I went to a meeting where there's a concern about building affordable housing and especially within the new construction arena. And this particular gentleman, I reached out to him and they are in fact building the, the definition of this meeting was that houses that are two hundred and fifty thousand in new construction. And he's actually doing it and he's doing it in our town. So I'm just real proud of the effort that he's doing and all the planning has gone through to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Takes us to sixteen B on the amended agenda. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the C D B G subrecipient agreement with left-up Sarpy County for the car match assistance program in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
Thank you. I move that we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment extending the C D B G C V subrecipient agreement with the Housing Foundation for Sarpy County for the C D B G C V Housing Assistance Program in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen C.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Well, it locked up on me again, so we're gonna do it verbal. Uh, Councilman Stenson?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
McCaw?
Yes.
Preister?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Welch?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the redevelopment agreement and redevelopment promissory note allowing up to one million, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars plus accrued interest to offset TIF eligible expenses for TKC Chandler LLC redevelopment project located on tax lot H two and Lot Five Edward Warren Edition. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Stenson. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with municipal and con- and contractors Ceiling Products Inc. for the Harville Drive Storm Sewer Emergency Repair Project in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents plus potential city initiated change orders of up to ten percent or twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents for a total project cost of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Discussion, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with royalty roofing and renovation for a new roof at Bellevue's Professional Building, twenty-two oh six Longo Drive in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clark, can, I, I don't know if they do, but the E P D M material that they take off and that they'll be placing on part of the roof, is, is that able to be recycled? Do they do that or does everything just go in the landfill? Do you know?
I think it's all gonna go to the landfill. Um, tar paper and, and tar shingles, I'm, I'm not sure that there's much recycling you can do with those and that'll be the vast majority of what's gonna come off that roof. There are some bad uh plywood panels in the roof that are gonna be replaced. Um, but that's the extent of the items that are gonna come off that roof.
Okay, it does say E P, E D P M, so it is the flat methane rub- Okay, it does say E P, E D P M, so it is the flat methane rubber on part of it.
Right.
The, the shingles, I know you, they, they do recycle in some areas, but that's more difficult.
Yeah, I'm not sure we do. I can, I can look into that if you'd like me to.
I, I don't need to interrupt or do anything, but if, if they can, it would just be nice to save it from a landfill and maybe we could even help them find a, an outlet for it.
Find a better home for them.
Get them another use rather than a landfill use.
Okay. We can, we can look into that and see what, what's available.
Okay. Thank you very much. Maybe they do it already. I don't know. It'd be a learning.
Yep. I'll, I'll find out.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please vote.
Got five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Burns voting no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Takes us to seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. Monthly reports are given at the first council meeting of each month, February and March. Reports are attached to the April fifth council packet. Are there any questions on, uh, administration reports? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make a quick comment. Our audit report is attached to the administrator's report and it came back as a clean opinion. It'll say unmodified. That's a term they use, but it is a good report for the city of Bellevue. It's a clean opinion. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Priceur?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it's, it's good to see the audit report and again, to see that they have found we have everything in order. I appreciate that. One additional comment on the, the library building and in the updates I get from the VA, they're talking about, now that we have already done an update to our VA center here, talking about bringing in a new VA hospital in Omaha. But they're also talking about upgrading the Bellevue VA outlet and it's probably gonna be five years if they even get to it at that point. So it's probably not so important, but they, they were talking about expanding in the existing site. So I'm guessing we're aware of that rather than it just being in the paper and them not telling us. So, uh, maybe any comment about that and the space allocation?
Yes, so, uh, their current lease goes for another two years and we're in discussions with their future expansion and how that would work for us. Uh, we're looking for an additional ten thousand square feet and I believe another additional hundred and forty parking stalls. So we wanna keep them in the building. So we're coming, coming up with some creative solutions to keep them here, but, uh, more to come on that. But, um, we've got two ideas that will float to them. We have to submit that to them by the end of April, Doug. Am I correct? Yep. And that, so we'll know which direction we're going by, by that time. But we've got two, two scenarios we'll flesh out with them.
Good.
But they are looking to add a lot more space, so.
And that could be a good thing because that will be additional rent and we can certainly benefit from that paying the bills. So, good. I appreciate that. Uh, also wanted to comment on the, in the public works portion, it talks about a grant of over four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Mr. Clark, would you comment on where we got that grant and the good work you did in getting it?
Well, um, when Mr. Risto and I met about the library a year or so ago, uh, we started exploring opportunities and, um, one of the things that I felt was available and, and Jim agreed was, uh, there's outside money we can find. And so, uh, we hired an outside grant writer and brought her in and, uh, actually at the recommendation of the, uh, chief of police, I was talking to him and he said, I know a good grant writer. And I guess he was correct since we got about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of grant money. The other portion of that I think is important. We requested one point one two five million. We received like four hundred and eighty-nine thousand. But the state's, um, pot of money had been reduced so significantly. People need to understand that that four hundred and eighty-nine thousand represents forty percent of the available money to be given out. So, uh, as the grant was awarded, uh, we might feel a little disappointed that we didn't hit a higher number, but we should be, feel very good. We received forty percent of the pot of money. So I think it turned out really well. Is, is that more information than you needed?
That was very helpful and I knew that the grant application was a million one. And so when I saw we were the second highest recipient and again, because of COVID and not having as many rooms rented, which is the turnback tax, we did, the money wasn't there.
Right, it just wasn't.
It was unfortunate timing, but I'm glad that we've got nearly a half a million dollars. So I congratulate Mr. Risto on pursuing it. We had gotten one also for our convention center. So we've been fortunate to tap into that fund and take advantage of it. And that's, I think, good, good leadership. So, thank you. I wasn't sure who did the grant, but my thanks to them too.
And I, I would like to recognize everybody in the city who supported that effort because there was a lot of effort went into the finalizing of the grant and there are several other grants in the queue. Um, and I, hopefully we can report some more positive news down the road. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you and thanks to everybody. We like to hear good news. One additional comment on it was our police received some good national news too. Uh, national media was reporting that they are a leader in recruiting of new recruits when so many other police departments are finding it difficult to get new recruits. So kudos to our, our chief and to all of his officers who are working on that too. Another, I think, very good thing going on in the city. And then one last comment on finance. I appreciate the finance report and it was good to see the reduced debt of two point five million dollars from the consolidation of some re-bonding and also that we have reduced the debt to valuation, uh, to under two percent. So I think that's, speaks well of our finances and our financial management and kudos to our finance department and administration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I just add that, uh, I know it's two months worth, but there's, I think, seventy-six pages I just looked at. Um, if the public is interested in seeing what's going on in the city, that's a good place to start is read those seventy-six pages, cause, uh, Bellevue's busy and our department heads are doing a great job. So appreciate all the work they're doing. Okay, we have a no closed session, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Priceur. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.